Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to entertain a motion to the mouth executive.
Salute.
Salute. I have a motion by second chair Red Eagle, seconded by Councilor Tishawala. Question please.
Councilman Redhorn?
Yes.
Second chair Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rickard?
Yes.
Councilman Schaffler?
Yes.
Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Councilman Tishawala?
Yes.
Motion passed.
We have moved item down on the agenda till after executive. Like to call Center Point Energy at this time. And thank you again for your patience.
Well, thank you.
Please introduce yourselves.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Vice President of the Energy Committee. I want to thank you for this invitation. My name is Sherri Tucker. I'm vice president for Communications, Community Relations, and National Energy Relations for Capture Point and Capture Point Communications. And we appreciate the opportunity. My father used to say I didn't need a microphone because I had resonance for my bridge. But it's nice to have a microphone. With me today is Wilson Price, whom I'm sure you all know. He is representing us. And also with me today are Jeff Morcel.
Just name, Jeff, thank you.
Jeff Morcel, he is the production manager for the North Burbank unit. And we have introduced to you today Eric Looney. He just joined us from John Barry Resources. And he's the district manager for this area. And you will be seeing more of him as well. Thank you very much.
Good to see all of you here. Wilson Price and Council of Capture. So have a very simple request of minerals council today that we have sent you a letter and a draft letter to consider supporting Capture Point for a grant with the Department of Energy. So let me tell you just a little bit about the grant itself. It would be for, what's the total amount of the grant?
It's twenty to thirty million dollars.
Twenty to thirty million dollars. So on the issue, so the study carbon sequestration, capture and sequestration opportunities. You're on the Osage Reservation and in K County. So what it would do is provide funding for that study to occur. It would also mean that Capture Point would make several billion dollars of lease investment in that study. And so we would really appreciate the minerals council to consider supporting that grant effort. Now, here's what it doesn't do. It doesn't bind you to Capture Point for any future deals. It only means that your support of this grant will mean that we'll both have information about capture and sequestration in the future. So we're not bound by any deals moving forward. It only means that we will get information that will be shared with you. So as part of that grant, that data that is gathered from this work, some of that has to be publicly shared. But other parts of it, there'd be analysis with it that only the minerals council will capture all of our data. Okay? So again, it doesn't bind you to any deal with us going forward. It's only an opportunity to get federal investment into what is the resource, what's the safety of it, that sort of thing regarding the R Buckle in parts of the Osage Reservation.
On their leases.
On their leases, right.
Can I, just like what you just did, could we just get some clarification along the way, maybe just briefly? Like when you said it'd be proprietary, would, if you were to do this with our support, would we be restricted from sharing it with somebody if we wanted to? I mean, it might be one of those things I'd be concerned about is if we do about it, we can't even, now that we know, it's prevented us from being able to move on beyond that because you told us it's proprietary. And now for us to utilize that information for our own use there or somewhere else, we may be restricted by it just because of this relationship. Thank you, Sherri.
Please. So the answer is no, you can use it however you'd like, including disclosure. So the data that's gathered from it would be public because it's a federal program. And there's information that Capture Point would need to provide to DOE that would be public, that an entity that if they wanted to get that by FOIA or means they could get that. But the analysis of the data that Capture Point would create, would share with the minerals council. Again, it doesn't bind you to Capture Point. You'll be smarter, will be smarter about the opportunities here, but it doesn't mean you have to do a deal with us. Of course, I think in the future, we'll come back to you. Again, think about Capture Point. The biggest producer in the Osage oil these days, this is a relationship that I, you know, Capture Point feels strongly about the good relationship it has with the minerals council. I think we're the biggest producer of oil for a number of years. This opportunity, again, is just to study the opportunity and without any obligation going forward about who you do business with. Now, we want to do business with you at some point in the future, but that's not what we're here asking today. The other thing you asked about leases, so right now Capture Point owns thousands of big surface lands.
Sixty-nine hundred acres, which is the North Burbank.
The North Burbank.
Now, I'd interject this. Is that the land that you all bought or is that the total work area?
That is the land that we bought from Chaffaral.
Yes, the sixty-nine hundred acres.
Yeah, and it includes the North Burbank unit and the South Burbank.
As a feasible ownership.
That's correct.
What significance does your surface ownership have to do with this conversation?
No, I'm just answering a question.
So I think with a lease, Chairman asked about a lease, that some of those lands where we would have strat wells to study this would require future action of the minerals council's actually proceeding. So right now we have existing wells out there leases. But some of these things with the, if this DOE grant comes through, we would need to come to you and get some agreement about using that, get a lease or some other appropriate instrument to use that area.
For what?
To...
For what?
To do the well, create the well.
To drill a well? You can do that now, can't you?
No.
You cannot drill a well on your own leases?
This is a strat test well. It's a different, what we're drilling, the wells we're drilling right now are class-two wells for EOR, in the hands of oil company. What this money goes for is not a production well, but a stratigraphic test well, which will go down about forty-four hundred feet into the R Buckle, to the basement of the R Buckle, where, to the best of our knowledge, and we can find out, there's been no information developed down there as to what the storage capacity may be, not in the Osage Free Reservation, nor any other place in Oklahoma. This is an area, and this is why the DOE has this grant opportunity, to get information about the storage capacity of the lower R Buckle. And that's where the strat well tests, excuse me, strat test wells will go. And there will be, but all this grant does, as Mr. Price said, is give the money for those wells. We still will need to get the permission and the permits for those wells. That's a whole other step. All this does is provide the funding.
Okay, that doesn't answer my question. Why, yeah, to drill a well, you have acreage right now in a unitization agreement or some type of a lease agreement already that encompasses this area. You have the right to drill an R Buckle well, and you have the right to drill through to the basement of the R Buckle well right now. If you, and yet you have to have a permit with the DIA to fill out Form 139, and if you want to core it, you can core it. What is it about these wells that you feel like needs special permitting? It's not, it's not, it's not a class-six well. It's not a class-six well, right?
It is not a class-six well. It is a class-five well.
Class-five? Tell us about that.
And we've gone to the DIA.
Are you?
We've gone to the DIA, and they have told us they have to look into it because they have not issued any class-five wells.
Okay.
And so this is an area that is new to everyone.
Okay.
And we're going to have to work our way through it.
So you're going to apply for a grant for a class-five well, maybe for four of them?
Yeah.
And there's a permitting process that's not been developed yet because this is so new?
Oh, the permitting process exists.
Okay, what is it?
It's the class-five, we went to the DIA to ask them specifics, and they said, we have to look into it. We have plenty of time to do that.
Okay, so this, so this grant application, we have plenty of time?
No.
Well, we need to know what it is you're asking us.
Yes.
About these wells. I don't know, you want to do a class-five well, we don't know what that is.
All we're asking for is a grant to finance them. That's the first step.
But you're asking us, you want to apply for a grant to finance the drilling, the gathering information from a class-five well, and we don't even know what a class-five well is? And I want to know what a class-five well is.
Jeff, would you like to throw up and explain that?
Yeah.
You let him, Jeff. Just make yourself one.
Okay.
So basically, all the wells we're trying to drill is reared. The wells we're trying to drill are not at the NBU lease, they're just to the north. And I think that may be the confusion.
There's one.
One at NBU and a couple of them off the lease. So the wells off the lease, we don't have the right right now to drill those wells. So I think that was the confusion, I was listening to the conversation. It's pretty simple. But the class-five well is just a strat test well. These wells that are planned, I believe we're planning on drilling them, collecting data, share the data with y'all, and then blow the wells.
What is a class-five well?
It's, a class-five well is a well that you drill for just basic information.
You can do that on any well. Any well we drill on Osage County is a class-five well?
No, they have...
What's the difference between a class-two?
They're not producing oil out of it.
Yeah, it's non-oil gas well.
We're drilling a dry hole.
Yeah, so a class-one well would be a class-five well also because you're not producing oil at class-one.
Yeah, there's slight differences. I can give you the data, provide you with the data of the different classification of the wells that are falling off a lot through. So the class-two is an EOR well, capable of doing EOR perdu.
Yeah, we've got lots of them.
Yeah, you have certain wells that are classes for, you know...
We have class-one wells, industrial waste.
Correct. And then as you move up, the class-six is a sequestration. The class-five is kind of a, it could be a surveillance well, it could be a monitor well, it could be well guided for information, non-oil gas.
We're not doing any production.
And this is going to be the very first class-five well I ever drilled at Osage County?
Probably correct.
Yes, yes, sir, it is.
It's an experimental well.
Yeah, it's an experimental well, that's right.
And what are you allowed to do with a class-five well? Just gather data?
Yes. It's just to gather data.
Okay. Thank you, please. That answers that question.
Okay. Thanks, that was confusing.
So gathering, gathering well. I don't know why you couldn't gather well, I couldn't, I don't know why you just couldn't go ahead and drill a oil and gas well. It does not produce it, or just use that oil and gas well to gather the data. Why do you need the special class-five? What is a class-five well that a regular oil and gas well won't do?
It doesn't produce any oil and gas.
I can answer that question.
I mean, I don't get it.
So the well, the well that we'll drill would be just permitted like a typical oil and gas well.
Yeah, okay.
We would gather the data, the data, we'd blow the well, so it's...
You can do that without applying for a class-five?
That's correct. We don't need to do the class-five.
Okay.
But in the sequestration project, this would be considered a class-five well.
It's a federal deliverable on the grant.
Yeah.
Just answered the question.
Is there a certain diameter of a well over that you drill? Do you encase these wells?
You encase the surface just like you normally do.
But do you run a string all the way to PPE or?
No, we just, we drill a well and take the core blood to the well.
Real stents maybe along the way or?
They may want to gather a sample of the R Buckle, something like that. I haven't heard all the details of what's in the permit.
But you don't have them all.
Yeah, the grant, so also.
Okay.
You have a federal deliverable, you request a class-five. I understand the council's a request on that, but whenever we had had our recent tribal council days, which I've already done that under class-one, we need something, if this is ever promoted, we need something that also talks about, what if you really hit oil?
If we hit oil, I asked this of Tracy Evans. I said, what's the likelihood, what is the likelihood we're going to hit oil? He said, well, we have no data that indicates that anyone has ever drilled down forty-four hundred feet into the R Buckle.
They have it out there, yes.
But we have no data. And, but if we hit oil, he said, we will produce it.
You'll go right back to DIA and ask for the...
That's right. If we happen to hit oil, of course we're going to produce it.
That's all.
We think it's unlikely. We would like to hit a well, to be honest, but we, the purpose of this grant is for basically research purposes.
In the, what you're asking, and we haven't heard your whole presentation before, maybe we're getting ahead of ourselves here, or maybe I am, but the purpose of drilling these class-five wells is gathering information? And is it for gathering information for the suitability of them qualifying for a class-six well in the future?
That's right, Mr. Rock. That's exactly right.
With carbon capture or sequestration in mind?
It's to determine the suitability of the lower R Buckle as a carbon storage site.
Is that specific to this one area that you're studying? Or is it in general, once you, say you determine and the result is that the R Buckle is suitable, is that countywide or is it just a certain circumference?
It would be for the area, I'm not a geologist, but it would be for the area that we're looking at. And we're looking at a swath of area into the Osage and into K County. I don't know how many other parts of Oklahoma that this would be applicable to. That's a matter for EPA to determine when people submit applications.
I'm sure it'd be good useful information for other projects. My most important question right now is this grant, this grant that you're applying for, is there a requirement of the grant for you to have the right to use this area for sequestration?
No.
At all? There is no language that if you're going to get this grant, you have to either, you have to be able to, be able to use this area for sequestration?
No. There's no requirement for any of...
Did you bring a copy of the application with you so we could look at it?
The application has not been completed, but we do have...
But you're asking us to approve to support your application?
Right.
We don't, we don't even get to look at your application?
We can provide it to you. The applicant, we're working with the University of Oklahoma and Carbon Solutions. This is not just ours. We're in, we're, we have part of those.
Have they told you that they've already been to us and we've already been talking to the University of Oklahoma?
No, they have not told us that.
Yeah, well, we've already been talking to them already.
Well, they may have been talking to you, I don't know who they talked to. They don't tell me.
So when could you get us a copy of the application?
When it's complete. We're putting it together right now. This is part of a package that we're putting together, that we're submitting to DOE, and we'd be very happy to provide you.
Well, that's what I would want to see before I would want to support it. I'd want to see it first.
Yes, exactly.
No.
I don't think that's possible.
Yeah.
It would be possible to do this.
That's it. So you'd be asking us to support an application for your grant, but we don't get to see what's in the application? I'm not having...
Yeah, exactly.
Captain. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Captain. Exactly, what are y'all going to do? What's the summary work plan? I mean...
The summary work plan is that we are going to drill four strat test wells.
Okay.
Collect data and submit and send that data to laboratories.
What laboratories?
Laboratories that are selected by the DOE as part of this process. I mean, we don't control the whole thing, we don't. We're going to get the data. When you get the core, we send it out to labs, we get back analyses.
And that's all you're doing? Drilling for, getting the lab data?
And getting data.
And getting that.
That will tell us about the storage...
Tell us about the volume you can eject to the ground.
And the porosity?
Porosity, permeability.
Those are two critical factors that we need to know in order to know what the storage capacity is.
Okay.
It's really not terribly complicated at this point.
So what, beyond grabbing that whole thing, I mean, why are we not being able to read what you're going to submit?
Because, to be quite candid, we're putting it together right now as we speak.
So you haven't finished?
That's right.
Okay.
We're put, we're working with...
When is the grant due?
The grant is due in March.
March what?
March 8.
March 8.
Yes.
And you're putting the grant together?
And we're putting the grant together. This has been, you have...
I used to write DOE grants.
Well, then you know that it's a laborious task, and we have a lot of people working together. Unfortunately, and we had one guy from the University of Oklahoma, and he was heading it up. Unfortunately, he had to be replaced.
So by March 8, if you had a letter in hand by Rowley, you could submit it?
It's not required that they have our, our letter of order.
Well, I'm just asking because I'm familiar with the DOE grant.
DOE says, to be, to be quite candid, it's an essential part.
Okay, but why? I want to know why.
Because you are the Osage Nation, you are the Osage Reservation. You are the minerals council.
I'm going to back up and say, if I may.
Captain Redhorn.
Thank you, Chair. So if we had a letter to you by March 5th, would that work?
If, we could be...
No, yes, or not?
Yes, yes, it would work.
Yeah, so if Rowley sends you a letter...
If he sent us a letter by March...
That'd give us a month to figure out what you're doing and communicate with you guys.
Yes, we can come back and provide you with additional information or send it to you.
Okay. I mean, okay. The information I want is not the, the application that you're asking us to support.
Or they're asking us.
That they're asking us to support. And I want enough time to review it and consult with our attorney before we would sign, before we would send a letter.
Yeah, I understand, but I just want to understand the deadline, which I now know. We've got a couple of meetings between now and then.
Yeah.
If we can communicate, continue to communicate from, I guess, our attorney, right? What they're doing, and you can tell us, then by March, what's that first, April or March?
First.
Yeah. We have two selected dates. Is that something?
What I could do, Mr. Rock?
If I could, if I still got the floor? Okay, so March 1, we have a meeting. And if we're all satisfied with what you guys are doing, we could submit a letter then through Rowley. Does that work? Or you want it to die?
Let me be very clear. It's, it's important to the grant that we get a letter from the Osage Mineral Council. And...
You got to have it to die.
It would be, where a lot of people are putting in an awful lot of work, as you know from your own grant writing experience, these are not things you just throw together. And it's an intense amount of work to cross all the Ts and dot all the Is.
We've got another meeting on March, February 21st?
What I can do is I will get with our grant writers, and I will get you a package that describes the grant and the parts of the grant and what it is.
Okay.
And so that, and I will get it to you. Your next meeting is, did you say February?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first, I can be here. I will bring people with me.
Okay.
And we will provide you with a description in advance.
All right.
So that all the members can review it.
Okay.
And we can answer questions at that time. I will bring our head geologist.
I mean, I think that plan sounds better.
Okay.
I'll come in here today and ask him for a letter.
Sure.
Okay.
I will bring our head geologist.
Okay.
And I will talk, tell him that he needs to speak in a language that I can understand. Because I'll be honest with you, sometimes he speaks a language that I cannot understand.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Chair. I have a question. Go ahead, sir. Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Well, if you're going to bring your geologist really knowledgeable in this field, we might want to have some consultants ourselves look at the same, you know, be in that discussion. But you said something that really pirk me up, and I was really glad to hear it, but I want to know more about it specifically. You said that you had to have our approval or authority or consent to do this. It was required?
No, it's not required.
Okay.
It's, I would say, it's not a requirement.
What is it?
But it is a perception.
Perception what?
From the DOE.
Perception what?
That this is something that the Osage Reservation thinks is a good idea.
Well, we don't know. We can't tell you that.
Well, I...
We would not want you to make that representation that we perceive it to be that because we don't know.
Yes.
We're looking at the possibility of what's out there. There's not, I mean, so I think, in other words, it's helpful to support the grant. Our judgment, or other people's judgment, is that without the minerals council's support, our chances of getting the grant go substantially down.
Why?
Well, I join in on this because they're going to have to come back and get the lease and permit off of us.
I want to hear them say that.
No, I'm going to ask them. You're going to, she done told you, she's going to go back to the DIA for exactly that. They've got to do it on a class-five.
That would be our...
Let me finish. You have to clarify on the federal deliverables. I wrote a few of these myself, but I come out of the Bureau with some of these folks. We don't have a problem there until you get to the point of no review. Until that time, I think these questions are coming from different sides. But at the very end of this, once you have to come back to this council with the leasing and the permitting, that's where I think we take care of our shareholders the best. Right now, if you want to encompass them on a grant, you weren't asked for to be a part of the grant, you're asked for to be part of the application. Now, if we can expand that later, I'm all ears. But I do know on the next criteria, when you actually develop the drilling and things of that nature?
Once we go for the permit.
Let me finish. I'm going to force you to do it. You're going to do, just like I do the class-one, it's all going to be written out, it's all going to be under lease, and we're going to make it for X amount of years, and you pay for that right. And it's not a situation where, we've got to support whatever effort that's out there. We've got to go back to the...
We've got to go back to the part about the oil you made us today. I don't forget it, I pulled a lot of those wells, I know my boys right now are working right now, your paychecks and some of these Osage fans. Bring us the information we need, non-summarary, show us the federal deliverables that we can respond to. Because the last thing I have is on behalf of the Osage Nation, I sit on the ICW committee for Department of Energy, and I think I can get this right to the.
Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, I have a question, uh, this phase three grant, is there a difference between, is there another phase besides phase three?
That's just the name of the grant, this is DOE's name for this grant.
And it's between twenty and thirty million, is that per applicant, per applicant, or are there multiple applicants, or you all, is capture point the only applicant for this, this whole federal man?
There are, there are three applicants.
Who are the other two?
University of Oklahoma. And Carbon Solutions.
And where is University of Oklahoma planning to use their?
Um.
Anywhere they want to.
They are the primary, they're the primary applicant.
Yeah, because they came to us already to talk to us about doing something, uh, in the way of a grant, and we told them that we weren't quite ready to talk about, uh, carbon sequestration yet. And we haven't got back to them, so, so the University of Oklahoma is going to be an applicant, Carbon Solutions is going to be an applicant, you don't, do you know where their area of interest is?
They basically, um, prop, to be, they prepare loan applications. They're the ones who are guiding us through the maze of, of, carbon, our company has never applied for a DOE grant alone before. And so, we are working with Carbon Solutions because they are knowledgeable in this area.
Okay, so I'm trying to, you all want to apply for a grant to drill four, uh, wells to gather data to determine whether or not the Arbuckle Formation is suitable for sequestration in this one, one area. Uh, and it's through this federal program, again, it's federal grant. And, and all these other two entities that I just asked you about, University of Oklahoma and Carbon Solutions, are really just involved in as much as it, it has to do with your application, right? They, they're not each going after their own application.
We're all together.
Yeah, so there's always, so, to answer my question, there, that you all, Carbon Capture, the entity, along with the support of those, Carbon Solutions, or somehow association with them, that group of you three are the only applicants of this whole federal program that's out there?
Oh, I'm sure there are going to be other.
That was my question, do, do you know of any other that are going after this grant?
I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
Okay, so you, and you all are looking at twenty to thirty million, do you know if that's the same range that all these other companies, uh, are looking at? Do you have any idea?
No, sir, no.
Do you know of any other states that is being looked at besides Osage County, Oklahoma?
No, sir, I don't. I don't know who the other applicants are.
Okay, now, we could have a conflict with Oklahoma University, because we've already been talking to Oklahoma University, that maybe, that they were interested in maybe working with the mineral council for us to apply for a grant with the University of Oklahoma. It could be that we might want to do this grant, of course, I guess the deadline being March eighth, if we were going to do it, we probably wouldn't set it until now. But, okay, and we're not experts in the field like you guys are, so I, you know, I understand that, and I'm just trying to get a feel for what we're doing.
So, just some other information, Chair, can you talk about the cost for each well and how much that's going, capture point is going to have to make investment for each one of these wells?
They, we have drilled one strat test well in Louisiana, uh, for which we got a class five.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
And that well cost us eight million dollars. You don't, it, it's a very expensive endeavor. Uh, and quite frankly, we have been told that we got a really good deal at eight million dollars. Other people, other companies who have drilled in the same area have spent eleven million dollars. Um, so, quite frankly.
Didn't have your.
Excuse me?
I didn't have your man.
That's right. Um, so, it's very, it's a very expensive endeavor, uh, to do a strat test well, you are drilling a dry hole forty-four hundred feet under the ground.
I've drilled some of those, I know, it hurts.
And so, it's a lot of money, and in, in this application, uh, we have to put up, capture point itself, not the other two applicants, is putting up twenty percent of the total amount of the grant in cash.
In cash, yes.
So we are having to pay the twenty percent.
Let me go to Captain Red.
Alright, thank you, Chair, uh, when you, and this is my experience with DOE grants, when you say phase, phase three, you've already gone through phase one and two?
That's just the name, the DOE gave us, they, it's not, it's the, the title of the grant, I didn't, the title of the grant.
Okay, so there is no.
They had another grant opportunity probably called Carbon Safe Two, this is just their latest iteration.
Okay, so, then I want to back up and say, I know OU wrote a grant that Car- Carbon Capture was involved with before.
And it was got turned down.
It got turned down?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so.
Because.
The grant that D, the University of Oklahoma did, and found what I call the sweet spot in Osage County. Who was that, where? Because I, I happened to be in a presentation and took one photo.
Well.
And I was like, wow, this is the Osage Reservation, I'm on the mineral council.
To, to be quite candid, we did this before.
With who?
Oh, there were, there were multiple.
University of Oklahoma?
That was one of the partners.
Because I saw the results of that.
And, no, no, we made an application, we never got a grant.
You didn't get a grant.
No.
Oh, you did.
We had too many partners.
Who's the, who's the primary investigator on this grant?
On this grant?
The one you're asking, while you're here, except asking, who's the primary investigator?
Uh, you mean the DOE?
Did, somebody has to be the primary.
Well, we have the primary person, it was named, his name is Pinter, he's at the University of Oklahoma.
That's what I'm asking, okay, he's going to be the PI.
Yeah, he is.
Was he the PI when the sweet spot was identified in Osage Reservation?
I do not know.
Okay, I think we could find that.
I, I don't know, all I know is a previous attempt at a grant.
Okay, but this is, you're not the primary investigator.
No, we are not.
It's the University of Oklahoma.
You are absolutely.
That's the result I saw, it's, in that last phase, they found a sweet spot, which I think Carbon Capture, Capture Point's interested in, Western Oklahoma, and developed. That's my notion, because no one's told us any, and I happened to see it in a presentation in Oklahoma City, I believe, and I saw a picture or two, one picture. They had a full presentation, I actually emailed mineral council, hey, did you guys know this was going on? Nobody did, we did not, so, then we find out the Osage Nation sent a letter last, to somebody, a letter of support, you know about that?
No, sir, I know.
You don't, okay, so, that, I mean, I'm trying to be an investigator here, you're here, somebody went to the Osage Nation for, and got a letter. When I talked to them, they said, we only submitted a letter of support for a grant through OU, so I'm putting two and two together, I think they supported OU's phase two.
Well, we have never participated with anyone for a DOE grant that was granted.
I guess I'm more screwed up now than.
I, I've never.
I'm sitting here going, I really don't know.
But, the fact of the matter is, the information that we are seeking through this grant has not been done by anyone else through a DOE grant, this will be the first time a DOE grant is used to look at the lower Arbuckle Storage Capacity.
Okay, here's, here's my knowledge of DOE, primary, preliminary, and then your research work is phase two, and then third, phase three implementation, that's my knowledge. So that fits my understanding of how, now you get to go and drill wells and prove your concept, so this work had to happen before, is what I'm saying. I believe, now, I don't know if that's the case, that's what I'd like to find out before we do anything. I mean, that's what I'm going to try to do, figure out who's doing what.
Well, the fact of the matter is, the information that we're seeking through this grant, nobody has developed this information at any time before.
Because they haven't drilled any wells.
That's, and DOE hasn't.
But they've done their geology work before.
They've done other studies.
Yeah, that, that worked.
But not this study.
They have, they have done the characterization, these are what they're drilling.
Not down this far.
I know, but they have done that. Okay, I, I think I'm.
Chairman?
Thank you.
Okay, uh, the, uh, the primary objective of this grant is to gather data of the Arbuckle Formation for the storage, to see if it's suitable for storage, sequester, sequestration of CO2, is that the primary objective?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then, did I hear you all say very early on that there was going to be some, some profit of some sort, or any kind of, would there be any, 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 did you say something about, receiving any kind of revenue from this?
We will receive no revenue.
No revenue.
At all, we will be spending money, we will be spending several million dollars, and we will not be receiving any money at all.
Why, okay, let me ask you this, why does capture point doing this?
Because we want to know the storage capacity of the Arbuckle, because in the future, if things work out right, we would like to be able to store CO2 in the Arbuckle, if it is suitable and for carbon storage.
Okay, and then there needs to be another if, if you have consent permission of the Osage Minerals Council, or a lease from us.
There's a lot of other ifs.
Yeah, so that's the objective, and, uh, the, uh, the well, what, and, and you don't know right now, since the class five is still being developed, I guess, maybe there's not any, it's not been finalized as to what the requirements are for a class five?
Well, we have to talk to the BIA, we've not worked with the BIA on a class five.
So you think there already is?
In other jurisdictions, they have issued class five wells.
Okay, that you agree that you're not going to produce it, that's all a class five is?
We, we are not going to, class five will not authorize us to produce oil.
That's correct, alright.
We can, it will not authorize us to do that, all we can do is basically what I call research.
Well, experiment.
Experiment.
You said yourself how, how expensive it is to drill these wells, and I know personally that it is pretty expensive, but I also know that the value of, of a four thousand forty-four hundred foot Arbuckle well has some value, uh, once you gather your information, uh, that well still has value. Somebody could run pipe in it and use it for saltwater disposal later, uh, so I would want to know what would, what, what the, what the ownership of that well bore would be, uh, once this study's completed, who owns the well bore, or are you going to be required?
We're going to plug it.
What if we don't want you to plug it? That, 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 that well, that well, forty-four hundred foot Arbuckle well bore has value to us, that's just it, we have, this is a resource of ours, and that forty-four hundred foot Arbuckle well costs millions or hundreds of thousands to drill, and, uh, that has value, I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want that to be plugged. So that, that's, that's one thing.
That would be a leasing and permitting.
But, there's something else I need to say, because of the folks that represent, that, that put us in these seats, uh, that elected us here, the head right owners. Uh, from what we hear from them, uh, the general consensus is really, uh, is, is really against carbon being sequestered on their mineral estate.
Yeah.
They are, I could hear some behind you already, uh, and, and I'm glad they're here, but we hear this, we get the phone calls, and we're on social media. Uh, I was saying earlier today, at two thirty this morning, I felt like I was getting scolding by some, you know, trying to go back to sleep, because it's like, five o'clock, don't you do this? I mean, the, uh, the, the concept, and probably, maybe it's because it's so new, and there's so many unknowns, we don't know, some people think, well, this is just a toxic waste, and they're using us for their toxic waste, and, uh, so, we, when we leave this meeting today, we will all have phone calls on our way home from some of these headright owners, some of them, some of them will corner us in the lobby on the way out the door, and we know this, and, and that, and that, and, and for every good reason. So, I just want you to know that some of these questions we're asking is not just for us, and, because we, we've got a lot of education to, yet to, to learn, a lot more to learn. But our headright owners have concern, and they have opinions, whether it's, uh, educated opinions or just hearsay and rumors, and the, just the unknown. But the general consensus is, they don't want us to have anything to do with carbon capture, well, not carbon capture, but sequestration, because they look at it more like, this is, we're being taken advantage of for a toxic waste, and maybe there's some dollars to be had if we do it, but then they say, you know, then there's the issue of sovereignty, and there's a lot of other issues also, I just wanted to get that out there, that, that our headright owners, a lot of them, and maybe the majority, the majority of the ones that I hear from are opposed to us doing anything with sequestration, so I just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you.
So that we've got this responsibility, that even if the eight of us have an opinion, we answer to five thousand plus headright owners. And I just wanted to remind everybody in the form of that.
Thank you so much.
Well.
I would like to leave it as this, we get the, uh, outliner of the application, we get a chance to review it, if it's sent already enough, we'll have a, our attorney review it, and get back to you to try to have that done by the twenty first, either yes or no, and, uh, that's, that's all I have at this time, yes, sir.
Chairman, one more question. So I heard the question you asked, I believe, uh, one of the questions that was asked is, is that, does the application require a permit or lease or a, from, from the minerals council beforehand, so we'll look at that and make sure that whatever information you give you answers that question.
It identifies that question in the completion of your deliverables, but your summary says that.
You want to know if it's.
No, I want it in print.
Okay, no, but the question.
On the application.
Okay, what you want to know in print, just to make sure I understand, is whether one of the deliverables under the permit application, excuse me.
No, that you have to do the application, leasing and permitting for the well. You, you got to anyway.
Well.
You're not adding nothing to this deliverable.
The leasing and permitting is not done under this application.
No, but it, but you're saying you're getting ready to do this next phase, I want to identify it.
Oh, yeah, I'll say it'll be done afterwards, assuming.
If applicable.
If we get, if we find out that.
Well, see, it's not going to hurt you if you don't do it anyway. We'll get a capture point.
Can you tell us, uh, what the bonding requirement is for a class five well?
What the what?
Bonding requirement, surety bond for a class five well?
Uh, no, I'll send you that information.
Thank you, I see this going, do we need anything other than let them go back and get their information? Thank you, I'd say this going to, we need anything other than let them go back and get their information sent so we can review it. With that, that's where we'll leave you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Again, we'll get to see if we can pipe scale. With that, I'm going to take the next identification on the agenda, give me just a second. Yes, sir. At this time, uh, been brought before the council, we'd like to have the council's resolution on six A, next gen letter, that, uh, Mr. Wilson has prepared for us. Could you have just a couple of comments on that, or you want me to just talk, ask? I can get it signed now, resolution. Anything you need to add to it? I just read it in. Thank you for January fifth, twenty twenty-four proposal, carbon injection storage submitted on behalf of Next Gen Carbon, Oklahoma LLC, Next Gen, we appreciate your interest in working with us, develop the mineral, Osage Mineral State. As you know, Next Gen, you're going to submit a version of this proposal on July twenty-three, revised on November twenty-three, and submitted further proposal January fifth, after considerable review and discussion. Osage Minerals Council has determined it cannot be created this proposal, thank you for your efforts and interest. I need a motion so I can be allowed to sign that. So move, I have a motion on floor, our Councilman Tishawala. So I, I have a second, my Councilman Big Horse. Any discussion? Hearing that, call for the question.
Second Chair Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Chakkerford?
Yes.
Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
I'm going to go ahead and sign it.
Councilman Tishawala?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
No.
Motion passes.
Yes, ma'am. With that, I'd like to ask the, uh, item, uh, number six B, the receptions, Councilman Red Eagle.
Thank you, Chairman. We had a interview with, uh, Drummonds and, uh, Belashy Moshak, uh, last week, by Thursday.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, we had evaluated, and Belashy was here, and I myself, and Jane and Perrier. She works for the Osage Nation. And, uh, it was advertised, and the only thing that was qualified were Dayton, Dayton, Dayton Drummonds and Belashy Moshak. We evaluated them and, uh, we came up with, uh, Dayton, Dayton Drummonds scored better than, than Shokka. He was close, but he scored better. He had a little bit of, he had more of an education advantage over, than, than, than he was. He had a lot of experience. And all we need is a receptionist, and, uh, at this time, the Osage Minerals Council hereby approves hiring Dayton Drummonds as a permanent full-time receptionist at hourly, hourly rate of eighteen dollars and seventy cents per hour.
Please move. That's a motion. I have a motion on floor, I need a second. All shaking. Second. Any discussion? Hearing that, call for the question.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Chakkerford?
Yes.
Chairman Waller?
I abstain because I'll be in direct supervisory, advisory position.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Councilman Tishawala?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Second Chair Red Eagle?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Council. With that, I'd like to move on down to the agenda. Uh, Councilman Redcorn, I'm in resolution file, one two six.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, previously, month or so ago, I requested the mineral council, uh, request the Department of Energy and Mineral, Mineral Development, we're the partner of the interior, to do an assessment for Bird Creek Farms, to determine the gas, total gas that can be delivered at that location. Since then, we had a generator test done on that location. Found out that the generator cannot operate at the gas that's available on that location. Uh, so Bob and those guys, and this was a test that none of us had to pay for, it was something that we, uh, took interest in, but said, uh, they conducted it, they couldn't keep it running. So, I would like to modify that resolution to include the language, the optimum location we identify on the Osage Reservation, and ask DMD, if they could come in and do it, how much gas can be delivered to this location? To modify, instead of saying Bird Creek Farms, to just where we identify as the optimum location.
In the Osage Reservation.
In the Osage.
Can I spark it out now, and that's your motion?
Yes, sir. That's Chairman.
Second. I have a motion on the floor, by Councilman Redcorn, seconded by Second Chair Red Eagle. Is any other discussion, Council?
Thank you, Chairman. Councilman Redcorn, uh, I asked this earlier today, uh, and if I'm not mistaken, I, I'd like to, uh, elaborate a little bit, or have you elaborate a little bit, on, on why didn't, why it failed at the location it is now. It's my understanding that it wasn't necessarily the lack of volume of the gas to operate this equipment, it was the quality of the gas. Maybe it didn't have a high enough BTU. Uh, some, some of our wells have really low BTU, some have higher, and there's a sweet, you know, the price for, for MCF is based on a thousand BTU. So I guess it's just not sweet enough gas to run that generator.
Right.
And if I'm not mistaken, it's been a while since I re, I, I, uh, that we had that original resolution. But, am I correct in, in remembering that the whole purpose of this is to see, uh, if it would be feasible, provided we find a, a well that's got the sweet enough gas to run the generator, if it's going to be economical to use gas off of a well to generate electricity?
Yes.
That's the feasibility that you'll want DND to study. Once we find the, the location, and there's, there, there's going to be lots of them all over Osage County. It's just that the first one you picked was next to the, you know, to the facility we already had.
Right.
So you wanted to start there. But you'll find another spot that's not sweet enough gas, and you're, and you're wanting to be able to reach out to DND and say, when we get relocated over there, and you, and you're asking today for permission to extend it, to keep it going, and let you go find another spot.
Right.
Because your first resolution was spot specific.
Right.
Location specific.
Yes, sir.
For clarity.
If I might add, the other criteria is, it has to be in a location where we can sell that electricity.
So, sweet gas plus a building, a brand beer, Oney Oak or Indian Electric or one of them. Or an end user, like a farm, or, or somebody that.
Indian Electric is already doing it in Pawnee County. So it's available.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Just call for a question.
I'm sorry, what I wrote down does not make any sense.
The Osage Minerals Council hereby authorize, make a request to DND for a feasibility study determining volume of gas available in the Osage Nation Reservation.
That right, that. Strike the words Bird Creek Farms, and then write.
Do whatever you want, Lacy. Fix it, make it right.
Determine the optimize, optimum location down the Osage Reservation.
Uh, Councilman Chakkerford?
Yes.
Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Councilman Tishawala?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Second Chair Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Council. I'd like to ask for the item seven, approval of the meeting minutes in front of, in front of you?
So move.
So move, direct motion by Councilman Redcorn, seconded by Second Chair Red Eagle. Call for the question, please.
Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Councilman Tishawala?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Second Chair Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Chakkerford?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, would like to entertain the motion in drive.
So move.
So move, direct motion by Councilman Chakker, seconded by Councilman Tishawala, call for a question, please.
Councilman Big Horse?
Oh, yes.
Councilman Tishawala? Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Second Chair Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Chakkerford?
Oh, wait.
Chairman Waller?
So much for yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. We're adjourned. Thank everyone for being here. Have a safe trip. Appreciate all your. Thanks, I'm sorry, bud.